We're recording.
The Chair knows that the time is 6:02 and I call this meeting of the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals to order. My name is Craig Meadows, Acting Chair of the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call of the full ZBA members. Obviously, I am here and Philip White.
Present.
David Slovater.
Here.
Harold Henry.
Here.
And Steve Judge.
Here.
Hello, I'm.
Our associate members that are present include Hilda Greenbaum.
Yeah.
David Alfield.
Here.
Am I missing anyone?
Yes, me, John Warner.
John, sorry, I didn't see you. John Varner.
I'm here.
Hold on, someone's got their hand raised and I'm trying to find them. Rizwan is here. Okay, hold on.
Is Rizwan here? Okay.
She is. Hold on, let me promote her. Okay, she should be in.
Rizwan, uh.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. So that, that is the full board and the quorum is present. Also attending the meeting tonight is Jacinta Williams, the planner for the town. And I don't see anyone else from the town.
I don't right now either. They may join us later.
All right. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025 Extended Through June 30th, 2027, "The ability of public bodies to meet in a fully remote or hybrid manner, this meeting will be conducted via remote means." Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological meetings. Additionally, the meeting recordings may be viewed via the Town of Amherst YouTube channel and ZBA website. If you wish to make comment, please indicate your wish to do so by clicking the raised hand button when the public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate that you wish to make comment by pressing star nine on your telephone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and town affiliation. Please also indicate your residence. Please put back into mute when having you finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the Zoning Board of Appeals Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation will be disconnected from the meeting. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law 40A and Article 10 Special Permit Granting Authority, the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to the parties of an interest. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 40A of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the Town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the zoning bylaw is Section 10.38. Specific findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by the town staff. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the Chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen. The Chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you're recognized, present your name and address to the board for record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for the special permit, the board has 90 days from the closing of the hearing to file a decision. For variance, the board has 100 days from the date of filing to file its decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the citing board members and is filed with the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the Registry of Deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda. First, the minutes from March 27th, 2025 for approval. Then, public meeting, which are ZBA FY 2025-120 Belcher Town Road and ZBA FY 2025-13-28 Green Leaves Drive. Belcher Town Road is per condition number six of the ZBA FY 2016-5. Special permit, the applicant must present the new management plan upon change of ownership to the ZBA during public meeting. For the Green Leaves Drive, request to amend the FY 2004-47 special permit by eliminating the community building and converting a dwelling unit into a community room in buildings 24 to 28, constructing a new parking area and deleting requirement to deed land easements to the town for property located at 28 Green Leaves Drive. Map 13D parcel 79 Professional Research Park, zoning district. We have two public hearings. ZBA 2023-18 ASD Schutzbury Mass Solar LLC, which is a request for a special permit under Section 3.340 of the zoning bylaw to construct a 9.35 megawatt DC ground-mounted solar photovoltaic array spanning 41 acres on 102 acre site with the accompanying battery energy storage system at three parcels of land owned by WD Coles, identified as map 9B parcels 11 and 12 and map 9D parcel 27 on Schutzbury Road. Outlying district zoning. Frontage and access to the subject parcels of land is located between 187 and 201 Schutzbury Road, and this is continued from July 25th, 2024, September 12th, 2024, January 23rd, 2025. ZBA FY 2025-0963 Salem Street. Applicant seeks to come into compliance with ZBL 7.0001 and 7.0002 per enforcement letter that was received regarding parking for property located at 63 to 65 Salem Street, parcel 77. General residents zoning districts continued from December 12th, 2024, March 13th, 2024. Applicant requesting to withdraw without prejudice. There'll then be discussion, general public comment period, and then other business not anticipated within 48 hours before adjournment. Hopefully, not at 10 o'clock tonight. We'd like to leave by nine. The first order of business tonight is the minutes, approval of meeting minutes from March 27th, 2025. Has everyone on the board had a chance to review these minute, meeting minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Hilda, you're.
Yes.
I have not read the minutes.
One moment, I'm going to post them for everyone to review.
We'll give Hilda a chance to take a look, and then if there are any comments or edits.
Um, I think I'm gonna look at it. I can't, yeah, I can't see the bottom of it.
So I'll just walk you through what was shared with me, what Hilda sent, so I've crossed out this section or the sentence here because that is obviously incorrect. It was Mr. Henry, who was the acting chair that evening.
Yep, got that, yep.
Okay, so I've updated the foot or header or the footer here, stating who the Chair is and what the appropriate board is. This is a change in terms of wording in this sentence. Another change in terms of wording in this section. Replacing rebuild with reconstruction.
Back it up, so I can see. It went too slow. I mean, went too fast. No, the, I said it's all the, what I was saying there, the age of the house is older than in the public GIS. No, that the house is older than than the 1879 or whatever it's, it's older than, than stated in the GLS system.
Okay, so that is another change. Change in wording here. Missing a letter here, so that was a typo. Changing the wording to add "will," I believe, instead of whatever it was there before, or maybe that was just missing. And I think that's everything, Hilda.
There was a typo and "not" on page three.
On page three, okay.
Line 124.5, the trash bins not.
Yes, I got that.
Yep. And then the fact that the bathrooms are not aligned, you're gonna put that in English? Oh, okay, you fit, you fit, okay.
Okay. If I've missed something, let me know because I couldn't read all of your handwriting.
Bottom of page four, is that what you said? Meadows expressed a similar sentiment, he felt he did not think it was from the board on.
To vote, to vote, I.
You got that, okay.
Yes, I got that one. But there was one that I didn't quite understand, you're.
On page five? Um. Corner boards got left out.
I got that.
You got the corner boards, okay.
Uh, boards molding.
And the compliance, you got that, okay.
Okay.
I know I made that point, um. I don't know, um. Probably okay. Well, I'll back up, back up to the blue stuff. Instead of honor, might be a budding, neighbors are budding with gable limbs or something like that. A bunch of other stuff. It's okay. You got the big stuff.
Okay, were there any other corrections that anyone else felt needed to be made? Let's get one up here.
Okay. Hilda, you're satisfied? Is everyone else satisfied?
It's okay.
All right.
I think you got the button stuff.
Okay.
I can't.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 27th, 2025.
So.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All right, the vote requires a roll call vote. The Chair votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Judge?
Aye.
Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
The world is unanimous.
Hi, did I vote?
I thought you did.
Who's voted? I don't know.
You're, you weren't, you weren't, oh yes, you were. You needed to vote. Although, you're, you're not on this, you're not on this, not on today's meeting, Hilda.
I'm not, oh, I can't vote, but I can, all right.
You can comment, but you can't vote.
Oh, all right, all right. I didn't know how it was working. I thought I had to be here for this.
Can I, can I chime in? So, Hilda, you're on a very specific panel, but right now it's just the full-time members voting on the minutes.
Thank you for explaining because I confused. I was confused.
Okay, okay, so everybody should be here and let's continue. Mr. Chair, I'm yielding it back to you.
Thank you. Before we meet, begin the public meeting portion of the meeting, does anyone have anything to declare about any of the agenda items? Okay, good. In the public meeting, the first item on the public meeting is ZBA FY 2025-120 Belcher Town Road per condition of number six, ZBA FY 2016-5. Excuse me. Special permit, the applicant must be present, must present their new management plan upon change of ownership to the ZBA during the public meeting. The confirmed panelists for 120 Belcher Town Road are myself, Mr. Judge, Mr. Slovater, Mr. Henry, and Mr. White. The following documents were submitted on February 20th, 2025. First, 106 to 120 Belcher Town Road Parking Plan, Town of Amherst, 11.20.23. Second, 120A Belcher Town Road Lease Sample, 7.1.24-6.27.25. Third, Town of Amherst ZBA Management Plan Completed to 2025. Fourth, Management Plan Addition, Additional Info, and last note. Fifth, ZBA FY 2025-120 Belcher Town Road Complaint Response Plan. The following documents were submitted on April 4th, 2025. Pioneer Valley Ventures Management Agreement Signed. The board will now ask the applicant or whoever's representing on behalf of the applicant to come forward. Who is representing? You're muted. I think you're muted right now.
Hi, I'm Donna Golick. Hi, I'm Donna Golick from Kendrick Property Management. We are the property manager representing Pioneer Valley Ventures.
And your addresses.
We are, we are physically located at Two Bay Road, Hadley, Mass, Suite 100.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Daniel Saltman. I'm one of the principals of Pioneer Valley Ventures.
And your address, sir?
It's 3921 Olton Road in Miami Beach, Suite 159.
You're warmer than we are, okay?
Yeah.
And is there anyone else?
Nope.
Okay. Who's going to be speaking?
I can speak or whatever, depends on your question.
Please, well, you're speaking on behalf of the applicant. You're gonna tell us what, make your presentation on the, on the items in front of us.
Okay. The Kendrick Property Management manages multiple rental properties throughout the Amherst area, and we would like to feel that we have good communication and quality service, not only to the rental properties, but to the owners and to the town of, Town of Amherst. We work closely with the building inspectors. We respond quickly when issues arise. We have a 24-hour on-call service. We have a maintenance team that's available for emergencies. The immediate response for a high-level emergency like fire, flood, obviously call 911, but it would be to Bob Sears, Scott Savino, and myself. The management agreement and the lease show what's included. We maintain the whole premise. These properties, we are pretty much onsite at least once a week for an inspection to, on the exterior. Each time leases turn over, we do an interior inspection, obviously to close out and be in compliance with security deposits. We have a punch list of items that we do at every turnover. We also, we're a little different from other property management companies is that in December, when they all leave, we go in and we do an inside inspection. It's amazing how many little windows are left cracked open, or they think they're saving money and they shut the heat off. This is my first time before the board, so if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Ms. Golick, how long have you represented, managed the property for Pioneer, this property for Pioneer Valley Ventures?
From the moment he purchased it.
So that's in 2025, 2022?
Correct.
All right. And you, you are aware that when the, the original special permit required, come back to the board for resubmit of the management plan upon transfer of ownership two and a half years ago. Why was, I mean, you're, you're all over town. You're a big, you do a lot of business here. You should know this stuff. I want to make sure that you understand that we do take this seriously. When property transfers to new owners, we, we want to see the management plan, and we want to approve it and see if there needs to be any changes. So this is my question to you. Number one, why did it not, why didn't you come back earlier? And number two, will you pledge to the board that you will review all your other recent transactions? And if there are other management plans that need changes in ownership that require a management plan to come before the board that you will do that?
Um, that, those are very good questions, and so I may have to ask you a question. When an owner, this is the first time I've ever come across this. Now, every June, we submit the rental, go through the rental permits, and I believe that.
Well, you have to go through the special, Ms. Golick, you gotta go through the special permits. If you have a special permit, that's where this provision will be found. So what I'm telling you is that, that you, as a, you're a big management company in town, you need to understand what the rules are for managing rental property that has a special permit attached to it. And what I'm saying is it's important for you to review your properties in town, those which are under special permit, and one of those are sold. You have to come back before the, the ZBA to review the management plan. That's what.
Right.
Conditions are. So that's, this didn't happen for two and a half years. It should have happened when transferred, when the property was, was transferred.
So would that information have been available? I didn't manage the property before, so this was new.
Yes, it's public knowledge. It's on the original, it would have been part of the the special permit that was enforced when the property was purchased. So it's really pretty simple. You guys just, I mean, I know you're, you're a quality management company. I just want to make sure we don't have more of these situations from other properties that you're managing, and I'm asking you to go back and take a look and make sure that there's not other cases where there is property that is managed by you folks and has recently undergone changes in ownership, and you have not come back to the board with a new management plan for our approval, okay?
Thank you.
All right. That's the first question. The second question is, you say that you're gonna have downcast lighting? And it says here that in the management, in the actual management plan, it just says two standard porch lights in the front, the building illuminates porch steps and walkways. And to ask for hours and types of wattage and fixtures. Will you put in, will you amend your management plan to include that these will be downcast?
Yes, for night sky compliance.
Right, and that will they, will they be illuminated by act, by activity? Will it be taken care of by timing? How are they gonna be, how do they get activated?
Well, if it's a common area, we want to have it activated by emotion, or at some point, depending on the codes for that area, it may need to stay on 24/7.
All right, well, just, what you need to do is just put that in your management plan. You've got two, three, four lights. Identify how those lights are going, that they're gonna be dark sky compliant, one and two, how they're gonna be triggered to go on and off, and what their wattage is, just what the management plan asked, what the form asked for.
Okay.
And you'll do that, and, and I won't hold up, I'm not gonna ask for the approval of your management plan to be hold up until that's done. I'm gonna assume that in good faith, you're gonna do that immediately tomorrow. So that the management plan will be amended. Okay, good. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair, thank you. There's a, there's a document, management plan additional information. Can the applicant walk me through what that is?
The, this additional one.
Yes, please.
It was additional information that I felt would be considered important for this review. It's a, it's a single structure that has two residential units, one on the first floor and one upstairs. The one, one is a four-bedroom, one is a two-bedroom. And it also provides the number of tenants that are on each of the leases. These were questions that I found that you were looking for. Is it owner occupied? No. Is there onsite manager? No. I attached my standard lease. We, part of our practice is that we always include a copy of the Town of Amherst Rules and Regulations, including the parking plan goes with every lease, smoking. Oh, the party, when they want to register for parties. We monitor the storage area in the basement, and again, the parking plan with the state, with the city.
In, in terms of, thank you.
You're welcome.
In, in, in terms of, other than the change of ownership, what else is changing in the management plan?
I don't know what the previous owner was doing. I don't have access to those informations. This is what we are doing. And the structure, when it was purchased, was already two units. So I, I'm not sure what the change would be because I don't know what the other documents were that the previous owner had. And I believe the previous owner was an owner occupied.
So I, I think that goes back to Mr. Judge's point, and I'm gonna follow up on a suggestion. I would suggest that for any other properties that has special permits, you pull the special permits and review them.
Yeah, correct. We have no other properties that have that have recently transferred.
But they may have special, I think he's saying they have special permits. Right, Mr. Henry?
That is correct, Mr. Judge.
Okay, we'll do a review. I.
But then, so do we, I have, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
We know if the, if the, if the property changed from a owner occupied to unit to a. to unit to a
I'd just like to clarify real quick that the property was not owner occupied. When
Who's talking?
I'm sorry, I'm the, this is Dan Solomon. I'm the owner of Pioneer Valley Ventures. That wasn't, um, it was not owner occupied. He, it was, it was a full rental property and the apologies is uh, on our side. We, the previous owner made no notion whatsoever that there was any special permit. Uh, and it did not come up during the uh, transaction from our attorneys uh, on either side that there was any uh, special permit. The second that we learned about it from Jacinta Williams, we uh, went and we proceeded with the progress. You know, and of course, we want to be in full compliance with the town. The second that the property was acquired, the first thing we're doing is we're getting the rental permits. We're going in there, rehabbing the units, everything like that, basically making the property even better than it was before. Uh, if we knew that this was a requirement, um, probably would have used it to try and negotiate the price down a little bit better, but uh, in spite of that, of course, we would have immediately brought to our attention. It is an apology that I don't know how this did not come up uh, um, when we were going through the escrow process.
Yeah.
Mr. Waschkevitz?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that part of the process of last year's gathering of rental registrations. We added a section about special permits, so anybody that has a rental permit should be able to find at least that, that yes, there is one on the property. And when we can find it, we are posting the number as well, so they can reference it and look it up at the Registry of Deeds or wherever, you know, it may be held. Um, but just so it's not a tedious chore for anybody that manages property, this is something that is available now. Um, so and it is, it is also something that we will be looking at more closely when we do go out and start inspecting, so.
Thank you, Dave. That's very helpful.
Uh, I I'd like to go one step beyond what Mr. Judge had said as far as the management plan is concerned. Uh, I I'd like you also to tell us that you're gonna go out to the property and make sure that those are downcast lights. Sky compliant.
Yes.
They're not, that you will make sure that they get changed immediately.
Yes.
Thank you.
Would you like, um, I could send a picture or something to Mr. Waschkevitz?
I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Are there any other comments from the board members? I'd like to entertain a vote to accept the management plan as it will be amended.
So moved?
Okay. And the vote will be on the acceptance of the management plan. Uh, the chair votes aye as amended, as it will be amended. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Judge?
Aye.
Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
Mr. White?
With the approved uh, kind of amendments, absolutely.
Okay, you have the approval with the amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacinta, I'll get that over to you, the amendment tomorrow, and I'll get a picture today. Waschkevitz.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is uh, the ZBA public meeting FY twenty twenty-five dash thirteen dash twenty-eight, Green Leaves Drive. The request to amend the FY twenty thousand and four dash forty-seven special permit by eliminating the community building and converting a dwelling unit into a community room in buildings twenty-four and twenty-eight. Constructing a new parking area and deleting requirement to deed land and easement to the town for property located at twenty-eight Green Leaves Drive. MAP thirteen D parcel seventy-nine, Professional Research Park zoning district. Uh, the panelists for this will be uh, Mr. Judge, Mr. Varner, Mr. Alfield, Ms. Greenbaum, and Ms. Khan. So yes, Mr. Sloviter.
So I'm not, I was not on this panel. I'm not on it tonight, so I'm going to mute and see you all later.
And I'm not on this panel, so I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Henry because Mr. Judge's voice is going to be spared for the evening.
Yes, um, Mr. Chair, you may have to stay. I'm not on the panel either.
Oh, you're right. My goodness. All right, well, I'm not on the panel, so therefore we have uh, Mr. Dwell. I I I want to spare your, your voice.
Uh, yeah.
Steve.
Well, let's, I can, I can try to do this as much as I, yeah, it's hard.
Yeah, how how about Hilda? Ms. Greenbaum, will you chair this meeting? Uh, you're on mute, Hilda.
Sure, I can share it. Um. I do have the Oh, you already read it, so I don't have to read anything.
You don't have to read it, you just have to ask her who's gonna
Okay. Ask, Mr. Alfield, are you, no, not Mr. Mr. Allison. Are you going to, what, what do?
Let me, let, i- if I might, if I may.
Open it up because I don't know where to start.
Okay. Uh, we have, there will need the review of applicant submissions. They are as follows. Uh, one, a construction schedule, two, Green Leaves management plan. Green Leaves parking area landscape and plan with Azaleas, part one. Green Leaves wall pack lights, info sheets, and lighting plan. And moments before the meeting tonight, there was a submission of a revised uh, construction schedule and parking area landscaping.
Thank you very much, Mr. Meadows, for doing that.
You're welcome.
I was not prepared to have all those papers in my hand.
I I don't think anybody was, but it's up to you.
Um, okay, so then, then the uh, first thing I I cut that off. Plus it rings just when I have to be doing something else. Okay. Um, I I guess the first thing that I I should do is ask Mr. Allison to please explain what he handed in. That's new.
Certainly. Certainly, Ms. Greenbaum. Um, just so the panel knows, I'm Donald Allison, and I'm here to represent Amhead Development, who is the developer um, of uh, the Green Leaves condominiums, particularly building twenty-eight, which is um, what we're here for. Um, there, there was, I submitted, um, actually, we submitted originally to you a a parking lot landscape plan. Um, I then met with Ms. Williams and Mr. Waschkevitz um, to discuss you know, the aspects of that plan that perhaps needed some um, edification. Um, so that's why you got a brand-new one just a short time ago, and I apologize for that. The 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 primary purpose of providing you with a new one was to deal with two things. To make sure that the plan indicated that the um, the plantings, the shrubbery that are identified as plantings um, were a minimum of five-gallon size, box-size shrubs. So the new plan does in fact specify that the, that shrubbery will meet um, the requirements of the zoning bylaw with respect to the size of shrubs that need to be planted. So it's a minimum of five-gallon box-sized shrubs. The second modification um, was to clarify um, because you all have seen the um, the grades at the end of the parking uh, area, the parking lot area. It was to clarify that the stones that were gonna be put there would be thirty-six inches above the grade of the parking lot, not thirty-six inches above the grade where they are placed. So I think you can see some of those stones are, you know, two or three feet below the uh, the grade of the parking lot. So i- it's to indicate that the stones would in fact be thirty-six inches above the grade of the parking lot so that they'd be very, very easily visible um, when people are trying to park in the parking lot. The, those are the two modifications in the um, in the landscape plan and uh, for the, for the new parking um, that you all a- approved at your, at the last hearing. Um, the other issue, there are two other issues um, that I think need to be addressed. The first is the is the lighting, and you were provided with the um, uh, with the specification sheets for the lighting that um, the electrician, Dan Whitley, um, the electrician was gonna install. Um, they meet the requirements, and I think his cover letter, which you, has also been provided to you. They identify that they will be number sixty-five, eight, five, nine wall pack fixtures. One on the south end of building twenty-five, and the other on the north end of building twenty-seven. Um, which
Can you saw that on the map? Um, on the site plan?
Yeah, i- the south end, uh, Jacinta, the the south end of building twenty-five would be here. And the north end of building twenty-seven would be here.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
So here's building twenty-seven, and here's building twenty-five.
So the one on twenty-five that you showed, where's that shining down onto?
On the parking lot.
It is?
Yeah, that's the whole idea.
Cause I don't get it.
Pardon me?
Tell me again where those lights go.
Don, do you want to share your screen, or do you want me to just point?
I, I'm unfortunately, I'm s- as as, I'm seventy-three-year-old and I don't know how to share my screen.
Okay, so just direct me, um, can you see the, what I'm sharing on my screen?
Yes, I can. So, um, as you can see from the arrow in the bottom right-hand corner, it directs you where north is. So north is to the left. Um, so the edge of building twenty-five that we're talking about, right there, the end wall of building twenty-five.
Yeah. Like, and where does it shine on the parking lot?
It's, it's gonna shine on on this portion of the parking lot.
Is that correct?
Yes, and then the the north end of building twenty-seven.
Oh, okay. I had it on the arrow because you were covering it up. Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, that my
Well, it's not you, it's the, the miniature you.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I got it. I got it now. Okay.
Um. A- and those specifications are are there. Um, obviously, there'll be dark sky compliant. Um, he indicates in his lev- letter, there'll be three thousand K settings. Um, and there'll be controlled off an existing switching. Um, so that's the, that's the, the lighting from the electrician.
Okay, so where's the switching? Are they motion detected or what?
I, 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 I wish I could answer that. Um. I thought they were gonna be motion, but I, I can't answer that. I'll have to
And presumably those parallel lines, they're on elevation?
Yes, those are the elevations. And that's what I was talking about before, Ms. Greenbaum, the, you know, the, the the parking lot elevation, the ma- where you can park, the elevation is um, two hundred and s- seven feet.
Okay, can't see that, but it might, I'll take your word.
Yeah, it's right underneath the arrow, and it's very light.
Very small, it's hard to read. Um, can, and for the people on the board that are new members or haven't been to many of these, can you explain how big a five-gallon tree is, five-gallon bush? How tall is that?
Uh, yeah, I, I, well, I I don't know how tall the bush is. I mean, how tall the bush is depends upon um, the kind of bush it is. Um, y- you know, the size of the bush could be a, a, a width as opposed to a height. Um, but it's a, it's, it, the size is measured by um, by that uh, that measurement of a, of a five-gallon.
Um, I can't relate to a five-gallon.
A five-gallon box is, a five gallons is pretty, pretty big.
So these are pretty big was, the pretty big was
They'll, they'll be good-sized. I mean, the the zoning bylaw requires it. I mean, it requires that they be five-gallon. Um, yeah, a minimum of five-gallon.
I'm used to hearing about trees of breast height.
Yeah, trees are caliper and trees there, so.
But these are pretty big bushes then, presumably, and I don't know how big does that get? How high, how did they get, the ones you're putting in?
I, I don't know. I would, uh, the, you know, the landscape company is Four Seasons. I mean, they're, they're a reputable landscape company. I, I presume I could ask you how, how big they grow. Um, the, they are as, as I think that thing indicates. Um, I don't even know what a golden mop tread leaf saguara cypress is, but there's four of those. There's ten, there's a whole kind of a, a rug, a blue rug juniper. Um, and then there are um, five large rhododendrons.
And were they designed to handle the drainage of the parking lot, or is, is there?
The, the, y- y- yeah, I mean, they're designed to sta- I mean, the slope is already stabilized. It's grass, but what they are is designed to, one, I mean they're designed to beautify the area. They're also designed to, you know, assist in the stabilization of the, of that slope.
Because the slope was washed out when we had the uh, public visit.
Yeah, some of it, oh, yes, a portion of it.
So has, while we're still on the same plan, what, are, are there any changes to the drainage, them, them planting the plants?
Um, well, I mean, a major change to the drainage, um, and again, the, the parking lot that the, the parking lot is going to be graded and dr- and, and to drain into the drain. Um, uh, in the north, I mean, the south corner of the parking lot. It's a, it's a dark black, dark gray square in the south corner of the parking lot. I don't know if Jacinta
And now it's the other side that was washed out. The north side was, was where it was washed out, so these bushes don't look to me like where the washout was. But, has an engineer looked at the drainage for this, or just the?
Uh, oh, the, just, just the landscape company, but the drainage on the parking lot, the, the, the whole drainage will change once the parking lot is graded and, and blacktopped. I mean, essentially, all, all that's happened.
Greenbaum, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, so if I understand, Mr. Allison, you're going to regrade the parking lot. You're gonna create the parking lot so that it slopes from the north to the south and from the street towards the building twenty-seven. And that's where, that, um, that's where that drainage culvert is, that you, is circled in purple. So so that the washout that was occurring by building twenty-five is going to be corrected by the re um, uh, grading of the parking lot. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's what Carl's will do when they grade that and, and finish grade it. I mean, as of right now, the reason, Ms. Greenbaum, you're seeing, what you're seeing is, that was just a lot that
I know, I, I was in on that when, when
Yeah, there was no, there was no grading done at all. It was just a lot to let people park on. Um, yeah, uh, but it'll be made into a parking lot that grades appropriately and drains appropriately to the uh, uh, to the catch basin there.
And some kind of curbing to keep the water on within the body?
I believe there's gonna be curbing around the edge of the parking lot, but I, I don't wanna be presenting what I'm not a hundred percent
Hilda, Madam Chairman, ma- I have a few comments if I could in- insert them here. This is a member Offeld, David Offeld. Um, first of all, on the drainage, it's just reiterating that the existing condition uh, all the water is, is uncontrolled, and it flows where it wants to flow.
Right.
Right.
If you look at the area, roughly half, maybe a little more than half of the area will now be controlled under this system. It's a, it's a paved area, and there is curbing. And there is curbing according to the. Um, plan we got last time from uh Engineer Robinson.
Yep.
There's curbing around, so it should catch all that water and put it down the storm drain, which is existing. So that will help very much with the drainage. I assume that that the developer will just. Contour or the landscaper will contour the rest of the uh area. Um, and set up appropriate drainage. It's not a very large area that remains, uh, not much bigger than, you know, a a small lawn. Or a medium sized lawn, let's say.
It and and to just add to that, for those of you who are at the site visit, most of that area. Most of most of that area on the north side of the what will be the paved parking lot um is gardens. Is garden, is residence gardens. Um, so, I I mean. I don't, I don't see any drainage kind of issue with those gardens.
Yeah, well, except there is now. There was.
And that that's going to be corrected by by catching that water.
How do we ensure that it's going to be corrected if it's not on an engineer's plan? That that I guess that's the question I'm putting out to you guys.
We.
Cause I I I'm not an engineer and and I saw that there were problems and I heard questions. About the adequacy of that drain, so I mean, um, this is pretty schematic without. Giving that kind of. That kind of.
We we in the, when we first saw this, I guess it was four weeks ago, um, we saw a plan for the um. For the parking lot drawn up by uh David Robinson, who is the engineer on the project. And the landscapers have taken that drawing and made their own schematic from it.
Oh, okay.
So, so the original dr- drawing is by a by an engineer.
So can I assume then that the Mr. Walker was in my audience that that they will. Have enough information from the other plan to enforce it?
Yeah.
You say yep, I'm asking Mr. Hey, what's in the audience?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm still here.
Yeah, well, um, is there enough information that you've received that you can tell that they're gonna fix that drainage? And enforce it?
Well, my understanding is the drainage, as has been mentioned, has always been existent there. Um. What they are doing is they would need to regrade that parking lot and start with a high point to the. But the northeast corner and drop it to the southwest, so um, the it's not a very big area. Um, Carl's excavating is supposed to be the contractor doing the work is my understanding, so. They they're pretty reputable in the area. I think they'll do a good job, so I'm not worried about it being done correctly.
And if you're not worried, I'm not worried.
Yep. Okay, sounds good.
I think that's adequate, that's fine. Let me see if I have any other questions. Uh. My only other question was, it's not about this, I'll bring it up later. I'll 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 ask if there are people that have questions about this. And do you care about the switching of the lights, what what it is?
You know, I I know, uh, Ms. Uh, Madam Chair, could I just say something quickly?
Sure, please do.
I I looked on the this this cut sheet and the lights could either be timed or a full total judgment by light. Uh, light and dark. Do you know what you what you want in that regard, Mr. Allison?
I I I don't, but I can ask the lighting person if there's a preference, if the board has a preference. Um, I'm I'm sure I can convey that. Um.
I, I don't have a pre- I just think, I don't have a preference. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome. Um, I guess the other thing is the schedule for compliance or completing the um. Building twenty eight, are people happy with that? And how do, how do you enforce that? So the the people move in by May seventh? Is this enforced by a CO or what?
I mean, I think I think the the best for me to way for me to address that is to say that, um. As you all may recall from your approval, there there are thirty eight, there are thirty eight units to be sold. Um, I believe they have um, uh, uh, they have commitments of some sort from. More than two thirds of those units. Um, and and. You know, one of the things in in talking to Ms. Williams and Mr. Waskevitz before this meeting. Um, I I just wanted to be sure that, one, we we let you know when the parking lot. Would be completed so that you would know that. Um, I I think uh, um. Ms. Manjian it would like very much to move the first person in by May seventh. That's obviously going to depend on. The building department giving a CO. Um, I I I think that's, you know, that that was inserted by her because that's what. She'd like to see have happen. I think she's very, very confident that all sales in building twenty eight will be completed within a year. Um, and that will be the end of, um, you know, building twenty eight and and as as we discussed at the last hearing. At that point in time, when the last unit is sold, um, Amhad is gone. Um, and the condominium trust and the owners of the various units elect their. Uh, members of the condominium trust who who will who will take charge of the condominium.
So, um. Do we have anywhere, something that's the the CO is depend, has to be done before the CO, for example? It sounds like you want to move people in somewhere. You said the parking lot wouldn't be finished by the time the CO. Did we put that in in the one of the conditions or not?
No, I I I don't think there was a condition that as to when the parking lot is actually paved. Um, I mean, there is, I mean, the parking lot is extra parking. Um, I mean, it's. You know, from what the permit originally required in parking. Um, I I think that well before. Um, building twenty eight is fully occupied. Um, the parking lot will be completed. Uh, if 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 the representation that will be is it will be completed by the end of June, um, you know. Probably no more than a third of the building will have been occup- actually occupied. Um. Yeah, I mean, I that's how I would answer, you know, that question. Um, again, obviously, there's. There will be nobody moving in till um Mr. Waskevitz and Mr. Mora, Mr. Mora. Uh, i- issue a a certificate of occupancy for the building. Um, and then a certificate of occupancy for any particular unit in the building that is going to be sold and occupied.
So you get on saying May seventh is when they'll be occupied, May seventh is when you'll start selling them, is that?
Uh, I I I am, I I want to say that May seventh is a wishful thinking. Um, in terms of when she will be able to obtain a CO. Um, in in order to, I I I can represent to you that one of the units, the first unit to be sold is a double unit. Um, for in excess of four hundred thousand dollars. Um, that is being built out right now. Um, and I think that unit is the unit that would like to be sold right away as soon as. Were able to obtain a certificate of occupancy, Ms. Greenbaum.
That doesn't necessarily mean that they can move them once they've closed on it.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, um, I will ask now if there are any questions from other members of the panel.
Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Waskevist has his hand up.
Okay, I can't see because I've got your.
That's okay, that's okay.
Um, David, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain this, um, the work construction schedule a little bit. This has always been a requirement of their original permit going back twenty five years ago. But as time has gone on, of course, these deadlines and timeframes have changed multiple times. And, you know, if they don't meet these uh timeframes right now, we would ask them to come back to the board with a new schedule. At a meeting. I mean, that's ultimately what this is. It's it's nothing that they're fixed to comply to. It's just to give us a sense of when this will be done. Um, so this is all that is about.
Also, getting back to the the business, what where does it, what what have we decided now about? The schedule with regard to the May seventh, or is that dependent on the CO? What, I'm I'm confused now.
Well, currently, they were required to come to the board tonight at a public meeting to present the landscape plan, the lighting. Um, the construction schedule, uh, you know, these things that are supposed to come before the board, before an occupancy is granted, so. If the board determines that this is adequate into their satisfaction, then they would be able to. As soon as the appeal period's over, be able to start receiving their COs. Um, if for some reason it's determined that more information is needed, then it'd be up to the board to decide what they want to allow or not.
Okay, um, and does anybody else wanna ask any questions? Well, I will ask my last one then, and that is, um. Since there has been considerable correspondence from the unit owners. Were they invited to the site visit or were they not invited to the site visit and? I would like to allow them to express themselves if they've got. Things to say about these specific items that we are repro- approving today, which is the schedule. And the site plan for the parking. Is that correct? That's what we're voting on today, correct?
And the lighting plan.
The lighting plan.
I'm sure the lighting plan, that the parking plan and the and the landscape plan.
So, Mr. Judge, um, should I, or may I ask? If the others have or or unit owners have anything to say on those subjects?
That, you know, it's up to the discretion of the chair, Madam Greenbaum, um, Madam Chair.
I'm the chair, so.
You're the chair, you're the chair and.
I don't want to do something out of line, but I think that maybe I should limit it to those three items.
But I think if you're going to grant, we typically don't have. Uh, as you know, we typically don't have public comment on during public meetings. But if you're, if you desire to have some, I would be, my recommendation that it be. Contained strictly to these three items which are before us today and not the entirety of the project.
No, just just for those items and and if they would like to comment about why they were or were not at the at the um. The site visit, because it would have been helpful if they had been there, I believe. But, okay, I am opening this up to anybody in the public who might want to talk, but unfortunately, I can't see hands.
Ma- Madam Chairman, may I say a few things?
Yes, please.
David Offeld here, a member of the board of the panel. Um, just a few, uh, just a few my uh miscellaneous comments. I used to do landscaping. A five gallon plant is quite a large plant. What you look for in a in a bush. Is the size of the root ball, because that's where the energy of the plant is. So a five gallon size root ball is is a, is a good sized plant that that'll quickly grow out into. Towards its full size. Um, on the lighting plan, I did have one question for the applicant. And that had to do with, um. Uh, how the the we we've got the two lights on the on the building, one on building fifty twenty five and the other on twenty seven. Um, I just want to make sure that those lights, uh, they're downcast, of course. But but are they high enough and bright enough to extend into the center of the parking lot? Can you comment on that?
Uh, it's a good question. I I don't know that I can answer that question. I mean, that would have to come from the electrician. Um, who who isn't here. I mean, he 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 was told what was needed, um, and that's what he provided. Um, I I wish I could provide you with more uh information than that.
Whoops, could you just elaborate? There are, I think there's existing lighting along a Green Leaves Drive. Is that correct? Could you point out?
Yes, there is. I don't have a site plan in front of me, but there are, um, there are existing posts. And 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 streetlights basically along Green Leaves Drive, so.
Okay, and I think finding them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, there's one right there, yep, and there's one right there.
Okay.
And there's one across there and one across there.
Okay, so they would contribute to illuminating the new parking lot presumably?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I guess the other thing I forgot to ask about the parking lot is where are the handicap spaces?
Um.
That at the.
In the parking plan, I think that you we we submitted um at the hearing, Ms. Greenbaum. Uh, I believe they indicated not that plan, the the parking plan from the engineer. I believe they indicated where the handicap spaces were going to be.
Okay. Cause I can't remember anyway, um. Does anybody else wish to speak?
There you go.
Thank you.
Uh, David Skavitz, if I can for a second, um, what the board could consider is to let them place the lighting where they think it's. It's necessary and if we uh do an inspection later as we're trying to close out the project and. Get indication that it's not enough, we could ask for an additional light somewhere. That would be, you know, not doing it tonight would be at their risk. But, um, but by presenting where they would put their lighting and having a full plan, but it's a possibility.
And I wanted to make sure when they're checking the lighting, that that is sufficient, the elderly people to see in the dark. Since this is older housing.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anybody else? Just sent, have you seen anybody from the audience who might want to talk?
I do. I have two panelists or attendees, um, so I'm gonna let Mr. Ed Perkins in. One second. He should be joining us shortly. Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing. Mr. Perkins, you are in the meeting. You'll have to unmute.
I I will recognize him to speak if he can unmute. Mr. Perkins?
Can you hear me now?
Now I can, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Uh, a couple of comments. One, I live in um building twenty four, which. And my windows face this new parking lot uh directly. And and I'm very concerned with the light shining into our living room and our uh one of our bedrooms. Uh, from from across the way from uh the the parking lot and I would hope you're going to. Have them downcast enough so that I won't be bothered too much because really. I'm looking at the parking lot right now and those lights would be directly in my view. Um, I'm very concerned about that. Um, and if I could just make one other comment on unrelated subject. Uh, right, right now, um, that whole parking area is being used to put snow. And if you put in bushes there and that sort of thing, I don't know where folks, our our snow people, our flowers. Are gonna put the snow. I don't know if anybody's considered that or not.
That's a good question, because we probably handled that in earlier permits, snow storage, because that's. Usually, well, the older days, we used to get snow, so it was an issue. We had snow storage was gonna go. Um, Mr. Waskevitz, what what's the answer to his question? About, oh, well, the first one I was gonna ask afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the lighting that they have supplied um is dark sky compliant, it looks like from what I can see. Um, it should down be downcast, should not uh face toward you in that respect. Uh, in terms of snow storage, uh, one consideration and and just my opinion, because I have gardens, is that. Snow could be piled on top of the garden rather than down the hill if that's what they were doing or even in that. rather than down the hill if that's what they were doing or even in that area. So or it it's required to be removed, um, immediately after a storm. So I, that would be up to the the snow people, um, removing it, but that's those are considerations. I mean, you know, so there's ways to handle it depending on their equipment and whether it be a bucket or or a plow, so.
Well, if I can just respond to that, first of all, there's a lot of salt in that snow. And I don't know if our gardeners, I'm not one, would appreciate that very much.
Good point.
And the other thing is removing the snow after every snowstorm would drive the cost up for the homeowners a great deal. And I appreciate your comment on the lighting. I'll just have to wait and see how bad it is.
Maybe you can be there when they're putting it in.
Uh, I'd be happy to be there.
A motion detector might work better than the light to dawn thing. Because then it would, you know, go off and and I'm assuming that if there were anything like me, they don't go out at night.
So they do, but okay. Well, those are my two comments anyway. It's one, the lights coming into my unit and then snow removal. And those are my two concerns. So I'll just pass the torch to somebody else if they would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Is there anybody else, Jacinta?
Yes, um, Ms. Susan Cummings will be entering shortly.
Okay, I will recognize Susan Cummings. Hello, you're muted, Susan. Unmute.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, we submitted comments, uh, after we reviewed these plans. And I really didn't hear anybody addressing our comments. Can, so, um, can I go through our comments or?
Oh, from what I remember, the comments had to do with things other than what was advertised.
No, 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 these are comment, these are comments to these three plans. And we submitted them. I think it was in your, it was in your packet. It's just one page. It says requested additions to Amhadd's proposed parking, landscape and lighting plans for area between buildings twenty-five and twenty-seven. It's just one page.
Now, it would have been real helpful if you guys had been at the site visit and you could have shown us what the issues were then.
But we were told that we could not be there because it would be a public meeting and we were told, we asked if we could meet with, uh.
Well, we'll have to work on that one because we very often have abudders come, so that part of them, I will apologize to the planning department, doesn't have a director at the moment, so everybody's new. And they don't necessarily know what all the traditions have been.
We wanted desperately to meet with you.
Yeah, it would have, it would have really helped a lot. So, um, we'll just have to make.
Can I go?
If he gets back to town hall, that we very often do have abudders. They may not necessarily talk, but at least they're there.
Okay, well, we do have some things that we consider important for this area. And one of them is actually in condition six of the, uh, the modified plan that the Z B A approved on March twenty-seven, I believe. And that was on the building twenty-seven side, the landscaping plan doesn't include the side stairs. And i- it's in condition six of the modification and that you voted for, you know, um, it said, uh, revise the side stairs. And I believe I believe Mr. Judge was was referring to what we, what we said in our comments that night. And so when we sent you April four, the requested additions to these plans, these three plans, we're asking, and also, we also sent an addendum on April seven to make it even clearer. Uh, for the, the stairs on the twenty-seven side, we are asking because they are not as safe as the stairs on the twenty-five side. The stairs are too wide, so the handrails are too far away for people to hold on to both handrails. It's very dangerous. And also, uh, if you will, well, there are pictures in the concerns we submitted to you, I, uh, but in any case, um, this, if they could make the stairs on the twenty-seven, the mirror image on the stairs of the twenty-five side. They're using trek stairs, which are longer lasting and safer. They have narrower stairs, so the handrails you can hand on, hold on to both sides. And it's, there's more enclosure at the top platform. And the stairs head right toward the path that we we, the sidewalk, we don't have on the twenty-seven side. But there will be, and it is on their parking plan. It will, it would, it would face the sidewalk that's going to the front sidewalk, the 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 sidewalk at the front of the building, you know what I mean? Um, and so all these elements, uh, I believe that's what the, what the Z B A, I think it, well, the chair, I don't know others of you, but I believe that's what he had in mind when he said revise the stairs. But because those specifics are not in in the permit, uh, we are concerned that Amhadd will not do those things because we got an email from Amhadd staff uh, in early April saying they repaired this one stair on the twenty-seven stairs side that was slanted down in two ways. And they consider the repair of that stair sufficient. I do not think it's sufficient. We do not think it's sufficient. And I don't believe Mr. Judge did because he's the one that added this in as a condition six. It's in conditions, it says, part of the landscaping plan, you'll revise the stairs, but he didn't pu- good put details. And we are asking in this submittal, in the submittal that we sent you April four, that 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 Amhadd, you know, put on the plan, the specs, the mirror image of the safer twenty-five side steps in both materials, that's trek stairs, white risers, et cetera, and the design. That's what we're asking. That's what we're asking.
All right, my, I would like to ask, since I'm looking at what's on the agenda, I assume that was what was in the legal ad that was advertised for this meeting. Um, is stairs considered part of the parking lot or or?
It, well, Mr., uh.
I I'm asking Mr. Woskewitz. If, can you handle this issue of the stairs on the, on the sanitary code or or health code or one of the, or one of the other permits?
So I.
I don't think, I I'm not, I'm not sure that it's, that it's legal to.
Madam Chair, maybe I can help since I raised the issue. And I just, about here, um, it was clear, my intent was that it should be mirror image of the, of what they had on the other building. And that, uh, just just replacing a tread wasn't sufficient. The concern voiced by the, by the residents was that it was too large. It wasn't safe to go, that was too wide and it wasn't safe to go down. And, um, so the, clearly the discussion in the meeting was that it needed to be, um, um, rebuilt to become closer to what's on the other building. Mr. Allison, I'm assuming that you will do that. That you.
Hundred percent.
It, that is not, that the replaced tread is not the, is not the end of what you wish to do, right?
Uh, that is correct, Mr. Judge. I, and I am in daily contact with the staff person at Amhadd who I presume Ms. Cummings is talking about. And it was never the intention that replacing a single tread was gonna satisfy, um, you're, we, we will mirror the stairs on twenty-five. That is not a problem.
I think that's what the, that was the clear intent of the board and the of the ma- mover of the motion at that time.
Is, is that in a permit existing that we signed that condition?
It is condition six. Conditions, yes, it's in condition six and it was supposed to be on a landscape, landscaping plan submitted. However, if if the board agrees, um, Jacinta could put it in the notes for tonight's meeting indicating that this was discussed, that it's supposed to mirror uh, the building twenty-seven stairs and landing should mirror building twenty-five. And we'll have that in the record. We can go off of that and work off of that. Um, and, uh, it is, if that's how the board wishes to handle that.
Yeah, well, it's a question of how I put it in a motion. Is your your comment enough or should it be part of a motion?
I would encourage it to be part of a motion. We can get to that at the end of the, at the end of the discussion period, Ms., uh, Madam Chair, I think.
Thank you, cuz I'm coming into this kinda cold.
Yeah.
And not, I'm not, not having done my homework sufficiently to know what we decided about that. Anybody else? Um, um, Ms. Cummings, have you finished what you were wanting to say? Is she there?
Yeah, hi. Um, I do have three minutes of several other people, but I I, um, I do have a few other things to say if you don't mind. Is that okay?
Well, it's relevant to.
It's to, it's to do with these plans.
Okay.
Uh, and, well, one of the things is the slope. I don't know, but the planting on the slope seems to just uh, be planned, uh, indicate that there would be planning according to this plan on maybe a third or a quarter of the slope. That's a big slope and we're hope, we were hoping to have stabilization and beautification on the whole slope, not just part of the slope.
Um, I will answer you that I was worried about the same thing. I was worried about whether the drainage was sufficient. And they've been telling me the correction of the drainage will be sufficient. So, um, that's, I'm not qualified to answer the question, other than to say it bothered me too.
Um, well, I mean, what are they, what what's gonna happen with the rest of the slope? Is it just gonna be weeds? If you look at the picture.
Answer that, but maybe, can I recognize Ms. The the lawyer to answer?
That would be me. Uh, yeah, um, yeah, it's gonna be grasses.
And when I call you the wrong name, I was gonna say.
That's okay, Ms. Greenbaum, you've had my name correct all night, so it's fine. Um, yes, it's gonna be.
I get honored, I'll remember.
It, it is. Um, but yes, it's gonna be grasses and I I am, uh, you know, we've, we're dealing with this landscaper. We told Four Seasons what we wanted. The drainage will be taken care of. This, this slope will be stabilized because the drainage will be taken care of. And it, it, it will be planted in grasses.
Okay, we we would prefer more planting, uh, uh, definitely. But anyway, I I have another thing, and and you're talking about drainage. Um, we have seen during precipitation events, we have seen water flowing sometimes toward both twenty-five and twenty-seven. That is with the gardens there. You know, with the gardens there on the twenty-five side, we see sometimes water flowing toward twenty-five and we see water flowing toward twenty-seven. I, I, I'm just, I'm just saying that. It hasn't been addressed. We, it's one of our, it's one of our concerns. That's, uh, that's one of our, I think, I guess this is on the parking plan, the drainage, I think. And so I don't see that that's addressed.
Mr. Allison, I would like to ask you a question.
Certainly.
How can we be sure that the the drainage is gonna work correctly before you guys hand over ownership to the homeowners?
Um, my response is, it goes back to the discussion we had at the beginning of this, um, meeting. Um, a very reputable, um, excavator and paver, Carl's, who does lots of work around here, will be grading and paving the parking lot so that water drains to the existing catch basin. The parking lot, and I understand what Ms. Cummings is saying, but the parking lot right now is not graded. So you, basically water's running as water's running. That will be completely changed when it's paved and graded the way it's supposed to be so that storm water runs to the catch basin.
Um, well, you see this on the twenty-five side, sir, uh, it's where the gardens are. It's not, it's, you know, uh, can you see this? It's, well, Jacinta showed this, this, oh, I'm sorry, let's see, how do I do this? God. Uh, here, okay, hold on. You see this area? Oh, my gosh, oh.
I I understand, I understand what you're talking about, Ms. Cummings.
Where it says gardens.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so that's beyond the parking on the blacktop and all the drainage. It's over here that water is flowing toward twenty-five apparently during, well, I've seen it myself, during some precipitation events. I just.
Well, I, you know, I, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if that water is flowing from right now from an ungraded parking lot, a basically open area. Um, it's hard for me to believe that water is flowing from the gardens, um, would, I don't know where you observe the water flowing from. But, you know, to the extent that it's flowing from the flat parking area, that will be addressed. To the extent that it's flowing from the gardens and you want us to tear up the gardens and regrade.
Not from the gardens, it's beyond, it's even closer than the gar- I don't know, I don't know. Maybe Carl can figure it out. I don't, I don't know. I don't, we don't know. We, we don't know. Um, but it's it's happening, it's happening on both buildings. So I, I don't know if that could be somehow addressed by Carl landscaping.
Well, Mr. Offeld seems to think that it's going to work. Okay, I'm wondering.
He gotta have the, Ms. Ms. Green, Madam Chair.
I I was just gonna repeat myself that if if the, if the, uh, parking area is paved and all the water that lands, I I used to teach this, okay, at U M S, drainage uh, in engine, in civil engineering, uh, all the water that lands on the parking lot will be taken away into a storm drain. That's not gonna flow towards the buildings. All the water that falls on the gardens will hopefully infiltrate into the gardens. I mean, that's good for the gardens. There's not much land area left for, to generate ru- a significant runoff. The, uh, we're, we're talking to tens of square feet left. It's, there's just, I I don't see a concern here after the area is paved with a curbing and proper grading to get all storm water off the parking lot and into the storm.
Mr. Offeld, do you think that that slope, looking up at the elevations there, there it's hard to tell how many feet apart there are between two oh one, two oh two, two oh three there. Do you think that that slope is, it can be sufficiently held by mowed grass or should that be something more perennial grass?
Well, I'd leave it to the landscaper to pick the grass type, but, um, you certainly see slopes steeper than that that are held quite well by grasses.
And and it's still mowable. It's not too steep to mow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You, you would know more than about that than me.
Yeah.
I- is it possible that we could have some input there? Because there are some beautiful grasses that are perennial glasses that you don't mow. And, uh, they can be quite effective, in my experience.
I think that you worked that out with Mr. Offeld, cuz it's, I mean, with, excuse me, with Mr. Allison.
Yes, would that be all right, Mr. Allison?
That's fine.
If you wanna suggest some grasses for me, um, to take back to the client for the, uh, for Four Seasons Landscaping when they do this work, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to take that up with them. Um, you know, and depending on a number of things, I don't know cost and I don't know what you're gonna propose, but I'm perfectly happy to discuss it with the landscapers.
Um, and then we just had, um, we have two more things that, well, anyway, I, um, on the twenty-seven side, we have practically no plantings, whereas the twenty-five side, you know, they've got those beautiful gardens. And they have, uh, nothing, casting nothing against the twenty-seven side. It just looks unbalanced for us to have nothing. And we're wondering if they could plant like about foot high uh, bushes, um, underneath, there's a whole, there's a whole array of meters, if they could plant some bushes of of foot high there and other places that they can find on the twenty-seven side. We're not sure how much space there would be for vegetation, but there's, there's nothing there and it just, um, it's just not balanced, you know, um, with the, with the twenty-five side. So we're.
And what, last item is what?
What's that?
What's the last item on your list?
Well, we, well, I have, I, can I say two more? One is, we wanted stairs on the slope. As it is, there's a path on the slope that people have worn through the years, so people use the slope. And.
Well, where is that in relation to the?
Where we're talking about the vegeta- where we're talking about all the planting on that. Where we're talking about the vegetation, where we're talking about all the planting on that slope.
And where would the stairs go?
Down the slope. So people could walk up and down the slope, and it would be safer, and it would mean more people could do it, because only certain people can walk that path, you know, the dirt path. And so we're asking for that.
That's not part of what's been advertised to discuss at this meeting. So do you have one?
Yes, I do. I do. There are two handicap spaces. There are two, this is, I'm saying, there's two handicap spaces that are at the end of this new parking area on the 27 side. And we're wondering, as it stands, there are two handicap spaces. And it looks like in front of 27, if it's feasible, there seems to be a regular parking spot, a nose-in spot. It could be just turned very easily into a handicap spot because there's an access aisle right there. And it would mean that it would be more, it would...
Interrupted. Are you the spokesperson for the homeowners? Do you have a homeowners group?
Well, I'm saying, these are from our concerns that have been, you know, they're...
I don't think all of these things are cogent to what's been advertised as legal to talk about at this meeting. So I'm asking if your homeowners group can work it out with Mr. Allison. That, unless people on the panel have a different idea, but we've got a long agenda here, and I'm sorry you weren't at the site visits to tell us, because a lot of these things should have been handled before the permit was issued. But again, it's questionable how much of it is relevant to what was advertised. And so I would like to ask now if there's anybody on the panel or from staff that might have something to say to Ms. Cummings about how to handle some of this.
Madam Chair, I just want to address the fact that there are two other individuals waiting to speak from the public.
I let her go on because I kept interrupting, so I didn't have a stopwatch that I could stop, or I didn't think about them. Let's hear the other people, if they have something new, different to say. I don't need a repetition of what we just heard. New material.
Okay, Ms. Ann Home will be promoted to panelist. One moment, please.
Well, is somebody else ready to talk some more?
I believe Ann Home should be present.
Yes, there I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I live in Building 27. I am very aware of the lack of accessibility in terms of the front door. But in terms of 27 and 25, people were talking about handicap spaces. But both of those entryways have no handicapped entrances. If you park there, you have to come all the way down to the entrance of 27 or all the way up to the entrance of 25. So I don't know why it's important to have a handicapped parking lot there. I think it's more important that the committee consider the handicap situation in front of 27. But that's, and the other thing I worry about is that drainage on 20, between 27 and 25, if you look at it, things are going to go flowing down the highway, and everything gets iced up when you get to the bottom of the hill. So I hope they have a better plan.
Thank you very much. And who else is in the audience, just simple?
I have a Joy Brenneman. I will promote them to panelist. They should be joining us shortly. Joy Brenneman, you are present. Would you like to unmute? Joy, if you can hear us, you need to unmute because we can't hear or see you. Okay, I don't know, Madam Chair, how you want to proceed.
She's on her phone, it looks like. Does she have to press star nine?
Yeah, it's possible.
Perhaps.
There it goes. Okay.
Hello. Don't know how to do this, but from my regarding plantings for the bank, which is a very steep bank between 25 and 27, there is a product, there is a plant called... Oh, geez. There is a plant that is very resistant to many stuff. And it has a pink bloom in the spring or mid thing, a kind of clover. And I would recommend that that is a simple solution so that the guys don't have to drive their vehicles and be in peril of tipping over for the steep bank. Anyway, that's my idea. Bye-bye. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and I would suggest you talk to Mr. Allison about that. So have we, is there anybody from the panel that would like to talk? In that case, we need to put together a motion, which I'm not, I don't have prepared because I wasn't prepared to be chair. And so can we sort of work on it together that that we approve the lighting, the parking lot, and the drainage plans, and what was on this list, parking. That we approve these things with the various suggestions that you groups are going to add to the motion that we talked about, the specific plantings we'll talk about with Mr. Allison. The notes that Mr. Waskey was made about the things that he's going to check and done right, like the angle of the lighting, et cetera. Somebody have they put together a motion?
You know, I think we can, Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes, please.
What about if we had put together a motion to approve the parking landscape and lighting plans as proposed with notes for the meeting that the, that involves, the notes that from this meeting involving the stairs, and I think it's Building 20, is it 27? That the stairs on Building 27 mirror the stairs on, are rebuilt and mirror the stairs on Building 25 that that the management company discussed with look at possibilities of additional plantings on the slope below the parking lot. And what are the notes, I'm trying to remember if there's another note that we needed to make on the, came up in the discussion. I think we dealt with the, oh, and the lighting, that the lighting is...
I was going to say that. I want the motion to cut the lighting.
Yeah.
Oh, but it's gone long enough insufficiently. I'm sorry, what?
Yeah. Yeah. But the lighting is motion, want us to have a motion activated and sufficiently broad to cover the middle of the parking lot.
Not shine into anybody's windows.
So notes, notes to that effect from this meeting would be entered into the record.
And that, but somebody like Mr. Waskey, or somebody who knows, make sure that the plantings on that, hope we're going to retain the the slope as is, and it won't wash out. That with regard to the landscape plan, I don't know quite how to say it, but whatever plantings I pick, they're sufficient to hold the soil in place. How's that?
That sounds good. Appropriate plantings to hold the soil. Okay, so, I mean, it would seem to me that then if we, if there was a motion to approve those three plans, lighting, landscape, and parking, with the notes regarding the staircase on Building 25, that it be rebuilt to mirror the staircase on 27, that there be, that the lighting is motion activated, the notes indicate that the lighting is motion activated, and that the lighting is enough to cover the central, to cover the entire parking space without intruding on other people's, on other properties, other buildings. And then lastly, that there be, they explore plantings of other plants that would hold the...
How about species?
Other species of plants that hold the slope below the parking lot.
Did you say something about to hold the soil?
Hold the, yeah, hold the soil below that, below the parking lot. Yep. I would move that. I would move that.
You will move that. Yes, fine. Will somebody second that?
Second.
I second that. Yeah, okay.
All right.
All right, I can put you back on gallery and see. Now I can see everybody again. Thank you. So we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Can I call for a vote now, or is there some more discussion about the motion? The wording of the motion?
No, we just vote now.
Okay, I will go on order then. Mr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Alfield? I'm calling the vote, Mr. Alfield. Okay, Ms. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that's five to nothing. We passed the motion. Thank you very much, everybody, for your patience. So I'm bye-bye, but I'm going to stay and listen, so I will turn myself off. Bye.
Thank you, Hilda.
I'm still here. Well, you won't want to ask me again. I asked too many questions.
You're right. Okay.
Thank you all.
I think I'm also done. All right.
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Steve, usually we have a 10-minute break at this point.
Yep.
Yeah.
Are you feeling so inclined?
I'm feeling so inclined, yeah.
Okay, if we could take 10 minutes, please. It's 7:46. If we get back, be back here at 7:55.
Sounds great.
On the next panel, I'm also going to skip out of the meeting at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good night.
All right. See you in nine minutes.
Very good.
Bye-bye.
Bye bye.
You see, you know what I'm saying?
You look a little more tired than you were when you started, Steve.
Yeah, I feel a little more tired, Craig.
Yeah, I, I remember what that was like.
Sitting in his heart.
I think you look wonderful, Steve.
Oh, you're an optimistic guy, Phil.
I have my moment.
It did feel good to get up and walk around a little bit.
I, I, I was able to do it during the last meeting, so that was good.
Thank you for reminding me about three minutes, I got carried away.
I noticed.
But I, 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 I didn't know what I was, you know, I didn't go back and look at the permit, I don't have.
I, I'm sorry, I, I asked you, I, you know.
That's okay.
But you've, you've done it before, so I figured you could handle it.
Yeah, yeah, I just. Didn't, you know, I, I hadn't looked at the. The permit, I don't have a copy of it, and so I didn't remember what was in it in terms of conditions.
It's okay, Hilda.
We, you didn't come in, Hilda.
We got it done with Steve's help.
That's right.
We got her done.
And hopefully finally that they'll get the job done. Because it's been hanging on forever, David disagrees with that one. I mean, how many permits are there on that thing? That I'm sure that these things are covered on the one or the other.
Been a long road.
Yeah, it's been twenty years, hasn't it?
At least. I thought I went back to the nineties.
It, it did for the early development, but the ones on the hill, I think twenty four was in uh two thousand three-ish.
Wow.
And that was the first one up on that upper area.
And I know the, the, the one that I did on the community building wasn't even the pile of, the just sent to sent around. And that was, well, I was off board, I was off by twelve.
When, when did Gates and Johnson sell that?
Well, I don't know, you couldn't find it on the GIS. It's all on the GIS. Uh, oh, I, I, David, I'd ask you a question. When you talked about the special permits, are they back online?
You, you can access through the GIS, um, you would have to, you can go to the Registry of Deeds if it was recorded there. Um, we have the numbers on the rental registration on the application. Where we could find them, um, so those are recorded there, at least, you know, so you'll know where to start. Um, and then if you knew what.
The older, the older program that you had before this one had all the permits on it, and that was very useful. And now, we haven't had access to them at least before COVID. Whatever this new program is, does not have that. And it doesn't have the stuff from um. From the violations of the behavior stuff that whatever used to be on a big map there, that hasn't been on for several years.
Yeah, some things need to be updated and, and uh moved around a little bit. There's been some changes, there was always, there's been some security issues with GIS. So some of the things that used to access, you can't access now and, you know, so things have changed with the changing of society and how things have been going, so.
Yeah, so are there any chance of getting access to the permits again?
You should be able to at least access your rental permits and uh.
I, I meant, I meant the zoning particularly, the old. They, they're, they're gonna be online or you have to go to the registry?
Okay, Hilda, I think we're gonna get started.
Okay, no, I just wanted to put that in that I, I missed them, cuz I used to use them a lot.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye. Uh, Everel?
I, I'm here.
Oh, okay. And Philip?
Here.
Are you still in the library? Oh, you are? Okay. Alright, well, I think it's time for us to move to the public hearing. We've got some background noise. It was better, thank you. Um, if it's okay with everybody, I'd like to switch. Uh, in the public hearing and have Salem Street go first. Uh, unless there is an objection. I have a feeling we may have.
Mr. Chair, I had put them last specifically because we needed the inspector associated with that case to be able to attend. I don't know if he's here, let me just double check, but that was why they were moved to the last spot.
I see.
So I don't see him here yet.
Well.
But it is your discretion.
Well, if, if we need him here, then I think we probably should stick with the agenda as it was put out with the shoots very next. Although I think shoots spray is gonna take longer. Um. So, the public hearing, we're gonna go to ZBA FY twenty twenty three dash eighteen. ASD Suits Spray Mass Solar LLC. A request for a special permit under section three point three four zero of the zoning bylaw to construct a nine point three five megawatt DC. Uh, four point four megawatt AC ground mounted solar photovoltaic array spanning forty one acres on a hundred and two acre site. With an accompanying battery energy storage system at three parcels of land owned by WD Kohl's. Identified as map nine B parcels eleven and twelve and map nine D parcel twenty seven on Chutesbury Road. RO Outlying Residence Zoning District. Frontage and access to the subject parcels of land is located between one eighty seven and two oh one Chutesbury Road. And continued from July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, September twelfth, twenty twenty four, January twenty third, twenty twenty five. And the panelists for this um are Mr. Judge, Mr. Slavater, myself, and Mr. Henry. Um. I guess, Philip, you were not on there.
No, Mr. Chair, I am not on this panel.
Okay, so the four of us are here. Um, and I can see there's someone else who's key to this. Sitting or s- I assume you're sitting there, Mr. Reedy. Um. So, uh. There was no site visit this time. Uh, the following documents were submitted on March twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, which is a withdrawal letter to the ZBA. Uh, there's a review of third party submissions, Chutesbury Road Solar Special Permit Peer Review. Dated one eight twenty twenty five, which is a draft. Uh, and not a final, which is pretty obvious if you go through it. Review of public comment submissions, the fa- following public comment submissions were made. One, uh Jenny Kalik, Michael Lipinski, online informants, excuse me. Format submittal, Chutesbury Road Solar. Um. Number two is Jenny Kalik and Michael Lipinski, O two, online for uh formal submittal. Suits Roy, Chutesbury Road Solar Public Comments. Number three, suggested amendment, amendment to the section four point two two three ZBA Rules Regulations from. Kalik Lipinski at, on four seven twenty twenty five. Uh, four, WSP Peer Review Comment, Kalik Lipinski, seven, April twenty twenty five. And fifth, the chronology of seeking written quotes. Uh. Mr. Reedy, which I assume you are representing, and if you will tell us what you'd like, we will hopefully acknowledge that.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, uh here on behalf of the applicant. And I know you've had a long night, so hopefully we'll keep it brief. Really simply, we're, we are requesting a withdrawal without prejudice. Um, the letter that I had sent in gave the explanation, essentially what's happening here is the, the project requires a special permit. Uh, the ZBA is designated as a five member board, however, there's four members currently sitting uh on the panel. And given where the project is and um. When we expect to get additional information from the peer reviewer, et cetera. We do not expect to have that all happen before uh the end of June. And it's our understanding that at least one member who is currently in paneled will no longer be a zoning board of appeals member. And so when it comes time to vote in, let's say, July or August, we would only have a three member board. However, we would need four votes, and we just could not get four votes at that time because it would only be a three member board. The, the board is not converted to a different, um, you know. A four member board and we would only need three, it's still a five member board and we need four votes. And so. Uh, understanding this, we've asked for a withdrawal without prejudice to be able to come back uh in the future in a couple of months. Uh, when A, we have a updated order of resource area delineation from the Conservation Commission. And then uh B, there is a full complement of five zoning board members. So that's the request. Um, I'm happy to answer questions on that, but right now we're just asking to withdraw and we will be back at some point in the future.
Are there questions from any other members?
I just have one for, I just have one for attorney Reedy. Um, so I read the letter, thank you for that. Um, just safely aware, when a new. Panel, when a new board is impaneled, the five members, this is gonna be from start, you're coming back. As a brand new application, having, needing to present to the new members everything from start.
That is correct. A butter notification, notices in the paper, the whole, as if this never happened and we're starting fresh.
Okay.
I would assume at that point in time, you're gonna be. Upgrading a number of pieces of the, your proposal. Uh, being familiar somewhat with battery storage right now, there are tremendous leaps and bounds going on with that. The tariffs are affecting, well, who knows what they're gonna affect, but. They're certainly affecting the uh, the mountings, they're affecting the panels. There is a good chance they may be affecting the cables, so you're, you are talking about a very different proposal, I would assume. Uh. And so I'm not, uh, your thought of coming back in a couple of months, I think maybe, I, I would assume is a little premature?
I guess what I'd say is, you know, eh. A preview of coming attractions, y- y- you know. When the board, when we're gonna be asking for approval, there are some things like battery energy storage, we'll talk about the technology. Uh, but as far as designating a specific manufacturer. For some of the other equipment, w- we don't do it, or we'll say, here's what we're thinking right now, but exactly for the reasons that. You noted, you know, when it comes, comes time for construction, it, it may be that we can't get it, or if we get it, it's two times the price, or you can, right? So, and again, not necessarily germane for this, but, and that's why we say a couple of months, because. You know, the fundamental layout of where the panels are, of where the, the resource areas are in relation to the panels, et cetera. Those will be, I mean, we know them and we are uh going through, you know, about to start in probably a couple of weeks. That Conservation Commission process for a more comprehensive ORAD. Um, I think our goal is to, to, you know, in an ideal world, we get that ORAD before we come back to uh the board.
And if I, if I could, Mr. Chairman, um, there's, there's also peer reviews work that has to be done, and there's a number of things that. It's, it's not realistic to think that it's gonna be ready to go in August or September. It's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a while before it's, before the, a new proposal would be, even an existing proposal would be ready to be uh considered. So I think it's, there's some work, there's a lot of work to do yet on this, it seems to me, am I right, Mr. Reedy?
Yes, but I would just, you know, as, as far as chronology goes, I would expect we submit in, let's say, July, and so then there is something to actually be peer reviewed. Right? So they, the peer reviewer wouldn't necessarily do it anticipatorily, so just kind of like say, okay, we're gonna start the process. Now, there may not be a substantive hearing until September, and I would suspect that. When it's time to, to really have these hearings, right, when the, the project is proposed and the peer reviews have happened. I could imagine a scenario where we have, you know, let's say, the, the last meeting in August is just for, you know, glare. Uh, and then the first meeting in September is construction logistics, and then, you know, something like that where. When I've worked on projects like this in the past, they, they've compartmentalized it so that there really is time given to each of those. Categories, and so I'd imagine a submission, but not necessarily substantive hearing until later in the year.
Till later. Okay. Alright.
Mr. Slavater? You're muted. You're muted, David. You're muted.
You know, I'm so, I'm. I was so accustomed to being muted from the last one that I forgot to turn it on, I apologize. It seems to me that all of this discussion about where they are going with the new proposal is not particularly appropriate for tonight. Because there will be a new panel that should be hearing all of this. So it strikes me that the request before us this evening is simply a request to. Withdraw without prejudice. And the timetable for the new proposal will also involve a new panel, and we, I think we need to respect whoever will be on that panel. Will need all the information, so if we are at the point where uh we need to make a motion on whether or not to accept. Attorney Reedy's request to withdraw. I'd be perfectly happy to make that motion so that we can move ahead with this part of the, of tonight's proceedings. And if we're ready to do that, I would make a motion that we accept his request to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Think, I.
Oh.
Isn't it a little premature for this before we have public comment?
Oh, that could be, it could be premature.
Yes.
I think so.
Okay, well then I withdraw my motion on him withdrawing his application.
Thank you. Uh. I, I think we do need to go to uh the public comment portion. Of the hearing, which I'm hoping will be uh directed specifically to the subject at hand, which is. Is, is not the Chutesbury Road Solar, but their, their request to withdraw. And to that point, I think we were, Mr. Judge and I, were talking specifically about the fact. And asking Mr. Reedy about the amount of time that it's gonna take and what's gonna transpire. And the consequence of that is that it's going to be a completely different new submittal. And so any comments that are, are attempted to be made. Other than the withdrawal are. other than the withdrawal are um not desirable at this time. And I want to remind you that if there are any comments of that sort, then they're limited to three minutes, please. Does anyone on the on the panel have anything they want to comment on before we get to that? Okay, Jacinta?
Do we have people? Anyone with hands, but let's give them a moment to process. No one has their hand raised. Okay, sorry, sorry. Wait, Arlie has changed their mind. Arlie will be joining us.
Arlie, if you could give us your full name and address, please.
Hi, uh, Arlie Gould, uh, forty two Pine Grove, Amherst, Mass. Is that good?
I I'm sorry, I didn't forty two Pine Grove in where?
Amherst.
In Amherst. Thank you.
Okay. I understand you're saying to, it's specifically about the withdrawing of this, and I appreciate that um. I've been writing to you about this, and I've been coming to these meetings, and they keep withdrawing and stuff. It's just, um. I've never been able to speak in this context of these Z B A meetings. And I, you know, you know, I just, I oppose the project, and I oppose it whether it's withdrawn or resubmitted as a new project. Uh, Pure Sky is a sort of Orwellian thing.
I I'm sorry, this is only about the withdrawal.
I know, but you don't get time.
The other
Okay, goodbye, goodbye, goodbye.
Thank you. Thank you for your attempt to comment.
Scott Cashin. What's next?
Hello, Scott Cashin, twenty one Hopbrook Road. Um, about a year ago, we talked about um, some biological resource surveys at the site. And the Z B A had expressed interest in that and issuing R F Ps for doing the survey work. Um, the surveys that we had talked about would need to be conducted sort of like now through the summer. And I'm wondering if the withdrawal would somehow affect the ability to obtain um, the survey data that we seek.
Uh, I, if you, if you are correct in saying that it needs to be done between this time of year and the summer, and they don't get started again until the fall, it it would, it would necessarily I I would, I would assume it would necessarily happen that those studies are done next spring and summer in twenty twenty six, not twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other hands at the moment. But I know um, Ms. Karina McCandless just unmuted, so I don't know if she wanted to add anything.
Yeah, hi, uh, thanks, Miss uh, Williams. Um, no, I just wanted to uh, comment on Mister Cashin's comment. Um. We've been working with Z B A staff to um, understand the entire and holistic scope of the habitat and species, um, including flora and fauna.
I'm sorry, could you give us your name and address and?
Karina McCandless, Pure Sky Energy, address is fourteen uh, sixty Farnham Point Road in Colorado Springs, Colorado, currently located in Maine. Supposed to get snow tomorrow. Um, and we've been working on a habitat uh, and species and including flora and fauna uh, assessment, which we will provide to the COMCOM and to the Z B A for their um review and findings. So that will be provided this year, not next. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Jacinta?
I don't see anyone else from the public wishing to speak. No hands have been raised.
And anyone else on the panel? Well, then perhaps it is time now for Mister Sloviter to make his motion.
All right, it's no longer premature, that makes me mature, and there you are. So, um. I would like to, I would make a motion that we accept Mister Reedy's request to withdraw the application for the Schutzbury Solar Project without prejudice.
Second.
Okay, should be a vote on the motion. I think we we need to vote to close the public hearing first, Jacinta. Yes?
Not yet, not yet. You have to vote to uh have this withdrawn without prejudice, and then you can close the public hearing.
Very good, well, or go on to the next issue. Um, very good. Uh, roll call, Mister Judge.
Aye.
Mister Henry.
Aye.
Mister Sloviter.
Aye.
And I say aye also. Thank you, it's unanimous for your withdrawal. Thank you, Mister Reedy.
Thank you very much, as always.
Okay, uh, do we need to close the public hearing in order to open the public hearing?
Well, you're going, are you done with Schutzbury altogether? We still have an amendment on the table, a suggested amendment by the public. I don't know if you want to talk about that, but you can just move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open if you would so like to, or you can just close it.
Why don't we do that? I'm I'm sorry, but I'm not familiar with exactly what you're talking about, so.
Um, it was part of the comments submitted by Michael Lipinski and Jenny Kalik. So I can just share my screen.
Yes, please.
Okay, here we go. So they are suggesting that the Z B A consider amending a section in the Rules and Regulations, section four point two, specifically four point two two three regarding preliminary site development plans, and um, the current language is listed at the top. The proposed amendment is listed in the second paragraph.
So, um, this may, can I speak, Mister Chairman?
Please.
Um. This may be very worthwhile, but I, it was not on the agenda for tonight's business, was it, Miss Williams?
Not officially, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention that it was here and to find out how you wanted to handle it, if you wanted to discuss it at all.
It seems premature to discuss. Yeah, it seems to me premature to discuss it. It may be, it may make sense, and it may be something that we want to do, but I think we have to have it on the agenda for um, um, discussion and notice of public.
Great, I just wanted to have that stated specifically for anybody who needed to hear that. So then we should just go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay, everyone says.
I I did. I was also gonna say, I agree with Mister Judge, and would also need Mister White to also vote on it, as he's a permanent member. Yeah.
A good point.
Yeah.
So that's just out there for anybody in the public who needed to know that.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I think we can go on to
You have to vote to close the public here.
Oh, yes. Well, do we need to vote to close this public hearing and then vote to open it again?
Well, no, 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 you're just gonna vote to close this public hearing and then move on to the next one.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a motion?
Removed.
Second, I, oh, thank you. Um. Now, does Mister White join in on this, or is this just, no, it's just the four of us?
The four, just the four.
Okay. The vote to close the public hearing, please, Mister Henry.
Aye.
Mister Judge.
Aye.
Mister Sloviter.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So the public hearing for this is closed, and we will open another public hearing now for the Salem Street. If I can find that note.
So just for the record, the public hearing for Z B A F Y twenty twenty three dash eighteen A S D Schutzbury Massachusetts Solar LLC is officially closed.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye.
Uh, Jacinta, could you look for Ed Smith? He said he is here at the meeting, but he didn't get a public or get an invite.
Oh, I see him now. Okay, great. Thank you. He should be joining us shortly, just in time.
Okay, for Salem Street, we have Mister Henry, myself, Mister Judge, Mister Sloviter, Mister White, and
Mister Sparkle's joining on this.
Mister Sparkle? And uh, and also joining us now is Ed. Ed Smith is here and apparently we'll have Mister Sparkle. Um. So there was not a recent site visit. Um, the following documents were submitted on February tenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, sixty three, sixty five Salem Street Withdrawal Request. Uh, hard and following public comments were submitted. Ed Ziggret um received on two sixteen twenty five. Lori Morris received on two twelve twenty twenty five. Lori Morris received on two thirteen twenty twenty five. The board now asked the applicant or whoever is representing on behalf of the applicant to come forward to do so. I assume that is you, Mister Sparkle.
Yes, it is.
Uh, and if you would name, address, and start the discussion.
Of course. Good evening, my name is Becky Sparkle. I reside at eighty seven Grove Avenue in Leeds, so across the river from y'all. Um, I have been the designer and applicant's representative for um, the plan and uh, submittal that had been made uh, at the end of last year. Um, and after um, the the short version of this is, uh, after the comments received at the last meeting and um effectively, the applicant has lost their appetite to attempt the eight car parking space and is uh, going to return to their five car plan. We are certain that we can work out some of the details with the building department um, in terms of, yep, but we have a how much, we'll have a much nicer looking plan, one that is actually to scale, as you know, we have a uh, an actual survey now, and um, we'll be able to produce the plan based on that instead of something based on the G I S system, uh, which has accurate lot lines at grades. Um, but but the gist of it is, we're gonna add fencing, we're gonna repair the lawn, and corral five cars into the front. And um, because that doesn't require um, special permit, we request to withdraw the application.
Any other comment? Mister Mister Smith, did you have comments on this? Uh, you're muted. Still muted.
Can't hear you, Ed. He says no, he's good.
He's good, okay.
The universal, I don't want to hear it.
No, I read his lips.
Oh, you're good at that, huh?
All you people, leave me alone.
Are there any board comments?
No comments from me.
Well, if we don't have any comments, we should go to public to comment. Do we have any public to comment?
No public that wishes to comment on this.
Well, if that's the case, then uh, maybe Mister Sloviter could do his brilliant motions again.
Well, I think brilliant is a little overrating, but in this case, uh, I move that we accept Mister Sparkle's request to withdraw this application. That's it. That was brief and brilliant. Okay.
I would second your motion, Mister Sloviter.
Thank you, Mister Henry.
Very good. Well, then we'll have a roll call on the motion. Mister Judge.
I vote aye.
Mister Sloviter.
Aye.
Mister White.
Aye.
Mister Henry.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. This was quite unexpected. I mean, the brevity of the meeting, I was expecting much longer one.
Right, not even ten o'clock, you know. The public hearing is bowed right out. Enjoy your time off tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we need, we need to have a vote to close the public hearing.
Yes, you do.
Do we have a motion? To close the public hearing? Mister Judge.
Second.
Mister White. Chair votes aye. Mister Henry.
Aye.
Mister White.
Aye.
Mister Sloviter.
Aye.
Mister Judge.
Aye.
Okay. Do we have anything coming up that we need to discuss that we haven't?
Haven't discussed yet.
Haven't discussed yet, haven't planned on?
No, we don't have any business within the last forty eight hours to discuss. So if you just want to go over the schedule, we can do that.
Uh, I think we could do that quickly. Very quickly, since we have a few minutes.
Very, very quickly, and there really isn't much to um, review. Just share my screen. So we are here, um, we've just gotten through everything on our agenda. Congratulations. And we voted to cancel the meeting on the twenty fourth because I will not be here, so um, Mister Judge, just sort of an F Y I for you that we did take a vote at the last meeting, um, since we don't have any applications pending for that date.
Okay, makes sense.
And then, um, the next meeting would be May eighth. So the way this works now, since Mister Meadows was chairing on the tenth, we're just bumping everybody up, which means Mister Sloviter, you are up next to chair May eighth, if we have any petitions coming through. Um, and technically, I don't think that we will, because no one submitted their application in time for us to deem it complete and to get legal notices posted and the such. So we're really looking at May twenty second as the next meeting date, and we have seventy two Curtis Place continued from March twenty seventh. So I was thinking maybe May eighth could be another admin meeting. But that's um, just something to think about. Because that's what we have right now. It's possible the twelfth of June can fill up. It's possible May twenty second will fill up now that I think a couple of people have submitted their outstanding documents and items that we need to deem their application complete, but we're still gonna review them. So this will change, and I will send out an amended schedule once Dave and I chat about those applications. But for the moment, this is what our schedule looks like.
We have new members coming in in June, is that correct?
July.
July, okay.
Hmm. Yeah, so. Yeah, so hopefully we'll see some of you again next year, next term.
Never knew.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Williams, June, June twenty-six. When I was scheduled to chair, am I no longer scheduled to chair if there is business that night? Since you just bumped me to May eight, when there's nothing to do.
If there's nothing to do on May eighth, you will chair the next available meeting, so. If that's not May eighth, then it will be June twenty-six, if however.
So I should still make plans to be in town June twenty-six, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, fair enough.
You don't have to be in town.
You don't have to be, that's true, Craig knows, Mr. Meadows knows.
Yeah, that's true, he knows, he's Ireland.
Ireland, exactly.
I'm not doing it from Ireland.
You could chair from the moon if you wanted to.
Okay.
Mr. Slovater.
I'll work on that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, but. In the event that that should change, Mr. White be prepared to fill in, because you would be the next person, and then we'll just rotate again. But there are only a few meetings left, so. Um, but that does bring me to my next question, did we want to try to schedule an admin meeting? Before this fiscal year is over, because I think we had one more thing outstanding, which was like the updating the fee schedule, which we didn't really. Settle on, because there were outstanding questions.
I remember the, what were the outstanding on that, Jacinta?
There were a few, and I wasn't able to answer all of them, so I know our building commissioner has said that, you know, he could be available if we decided we wanted to revisit it.
So if we're gonna do an admin meeting, perhaps throw that amendment question on there as well.
Mm-hmm, yes. Definitely. So it'll be two items to amend.
Yeah, we do that, yep, that's right now, the. The um twenty-second is.
Mm-hmm, we could do the twenty-second. A little admin in there with seventy-two Curtis could work, yes. Okay.
And and Mr. Judge will be here on the twenty-second of May to chair that, is that correct?
I will be, yep.
Okay, I, okay. I think that would be good with, to have all that knowledge presence when we make a decision.
Well, we'll have all, I think everybody, all the permanent members are available that day, so that's good.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes. So that's it.
Right. Wait, so add then, okay.
Second.
Okay. Who's gonna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Very good.
I'm exhausted, I'm exhausted from motion making.
You've had too much.
That's all right, because I'm sitting in a classroom and I'm worried they're gonna lock me in the building.
Thank you for the support.
There's no discussion on this, so, Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Judge.
Aye.
Mr. Slovater.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
And a chair votes aye. Thank you all.
Good evening, everyone.